We'll go ahead and call the meeting in order. Have Sandy do roll call.
Councilmember Brennan?
Here.
Brennan, Perry?
Yes.
Mailer?
Yes.
I'll change seats.
All right.
You sure? I'll switch seats with you.
We're good. Move on to the -- if there's any conflict of interest?
No.
If not, none, we'll move on to three. We'll need a motion for the consent agenda.
I would move passage to consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, we'll call for a vote.
Councilperson Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move on to line four. Now is the time and place for the public hearing. Adam, have we received any written or oral comments?
No, I have not.
If none, we'll need a motion and a second to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing related to the storefront facade.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? If none, we'll move on to a vote.
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We'll move on to line five, projects. The Sexy Airport Layout Plan. We'll go to A1. We'll need a motion for the consideration of approving the FFA drawdown number five in the amount of $11,222.
I would make a motion considering approval of the FFA drawdown number five for $11,222.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If none, we'll move on.
The work is current with this amount of money?
Correct. I mean, the layout plan is, of course, work being done by the engineers to prepare the plan. So, they have -- actually, you're probably a better one to talk about that than I am.
Yeah. Where they're at so far is apparently they have the funds to continue with what they're doing in any future projects that are within the reasons that they have the funds for. So, right now, I think they're set in pretty good shape.
If no other discussion, we'll move on to a vote.
Councilperson Brennan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move on to A2. We'll need a motion for the consideration of approving Olson Associates' bill in the amount of $10,168.50.
I have a question. You know, with the airport, with the FAA, is there a cap at which the city reaches where we do not have to, you know, contribute our percentage?
That is only set by us. The way it works is, is that the FAA will cover 90% of the project up to any awarded amount. And typically, our projects are at or below the awarded amount. In fact, I think in the time I've been here, we've not had one that's actually exceeded that, that hasn't been dealt with with grant money. So, what you're left with is the 10%. And that the arrangement that is built within our budget is, is that we tell the airport that we will 50/50 match up to $2,000 in a fiscal year. Once that $2,000 threshold is met, the Airport Commission is responsible for 100% of that 10% match.
Okay. So, the $11,222 covers Olson Associates' bill and?
It covers number two and number three. The remaining amount that you're not approving is the portion that the airport is paying directly itself.
I'll make the motion to the --
Did we have a motion? No?
Not on Olson Bill.
All right.
I'll make the motion to approve the Olson Associates' bill in the amount of $10,168.50.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If none, we'll move on to a vote.
Councilperson Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move on to A3. We'll need a motion for the consideration of approving McCullough Law Firm's bill in the amount of $2,300.
What was the necessity for the abstracting costs associated with the airport?
When you're doing a layout plan, one of the things you have to identify is, is the status and ownership status of your property and what's your easement relationship is with the adjacent property owners. And so, what they had to do is they employ the abstract company via an attorney for the purposes of making an updated opinion so that they can correctly reflect to the FAA the status of the property and the adjacent properties.
Okay.
We've also already paid one.
I would move approving McCullough Law Firm's bill in the amount of $2,300.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, we'll move on to a vote.
Councilperson Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move on to A4. We'll need a motion for the consideration of approving FAA drawdown number six in the amount of $18,303.
I'd also move to approve the FAA drawdown number six in the amount of $8,303.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
The reason you have two instead of one is they hadn't billed us some things in a while because they had an error internally at Olson in their billing department, and Heather had to get that corrected before she submitted bills to us. So, that's why you have two drawdowns instead of one this time, just in case you were interested.
Move on to a vote.
Councilperson Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move on to A5. We'll need a motion for the consideration of approving Olson Associates' bill in the amount of $15,252.75.
I would move to approve Olson Associates' bill in the amount of $15,252.75.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If none, call for a vote.
Councilperson Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move on to A6. We'll need a motion for the consideration of approving Olson Associates' bill in the amount of $5,084.25.
I'd also move to approve the Olson Associates' bill in the amount of $5,084.25.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, we'll move on to a vote.
Councilperson Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move on to B, the Sexy Airport Runway Improvement Project. We'll need a motion for the consideration of reviewing and rewarding construction bid for project.
Should that be awarding maybe?
Yeah. You'll see in your packet, a package that was from Olson that is labeled at the top, memorandum. Within that, you'll see on the front page, it provides you a breakdown of the bids as they were opened on May 4th. You will see that included in that, she makes an evaluation on what action the council takes. You'll see that on actual page two. And you'll see that we recommend the Airport Commission and the City Council award the contract to National Sealant and Concrete. Awarding of the contract shall be subject to FAA concurrence. That is their recommendation to you. National Sealant and Concrete was the low bidder at $228,000 roughly, which was just under, almost 24% below the engineers' estimates.
And they weren't on the DOT's list of approved contractors? Did they pass that? Or wasn't there, didn't you mention something to that affecting your notes?
You'll see that. It says, "National --"
Pre-qualified contractors?
As per the instructions to the beer section, the financial documents submitted complied with and fulfilled the requirements as indicated in the special facilities complete project.
I would move to award the airport contract to National Sealant and Concrete pursuant to FAA approval.
Been moved?
I'll second that.
And seconded? Any further discussion? If not, we'll move on to a vote.
Councilperson Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move on to B2. We'll need a motion for the consideration of submitting grant application and sponsor certification to the FAA?
This would also be subject to their approval, but that seems to be kind of odd because you're submitting it to them. But she did say in her notes that she recommended both be approved, subject to FAA approval. Well, you're actually submitting this for FAA approval, but that's what she said in her message to me.
Too much is better than not enough, right?
Right. I thought it was a bit odd.
I would move submitting grant application and sponsor certification to the FAA, subject to FAA approval.
Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? If none, we'll call for a vote.
Councilperson Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move on to 5C, the Sexy Passade Project. We'll need a motion for the consideration of amending drawdown number 15, the city's portion from $5,772.46 to $5,526.45.
Upon review of Fred's applications for funding, we found that there were some mistakes made in the way the percentages were broke down. So, we found on two previous ones, I believe one was from December and one was from earlier last year. However, for purposes of auditing importance, we wanted to make sure that we had some kind of acknowledgement by the council correcting these two portions.
So then, does this affect the other portions of that?
It would only affect the private portion, which you don't approve, the private portion.
Were we approving advancing?
No, not on either one of the two that we were correcting. They both came after the first half, but not before the first half was exhausted.
Does that affect the amount that we needed to approve?
No, no, because we used it as a --
For the two reorders?
No, because we basically went till it rolled over and then we started preapproving at that point. It shouldn't make a difference, a small amount should not make a significant difference.
Well, considering the two together, actually mean that we're contributing more, so that's all right.
Looking for a motion?
I'd also move to approve the city's portion from $5,772.46 to the amount of $5,526.45.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion on it? If none, we'll move on to a vote.
Councilperson Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move on to C2. We'll need a motion for the consideration of amending drawdown number 13, the city's portion from $320 to $1,830.75.
This was last September. I can't explain why this one was so far off. But we went back and checked them, and it was that far off.
I would move to amend drawdown number 13, city portion from 320 to 1830.75.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote.
Councilperson Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now is the time for the citizens. It's the opportunity to address the council on items that are not on the agenda, if anybody wants to. If not, we'll move on to seven, continuing business, the Storm Sewer Project update.
Sure, just to let all of you know, the new line is in place. It is connected. It's been buried at this point. If you go up to South 10th or live on South 10th, you'll be aware that it is in place. There's some impaction that, of course, needs to go on before they set the driveways and actually pour the driveways. And then, of course, there will be some planting that goes on to replace the grass that's been lost as part of the process. Other than that, we're basically at the cleanup phase at this point of the project. When we did this project, we got commitments from the contractor to, that they'd be charging us in next fiscal year, not this fiscal year. That was part of our deal with them. So, they were, so that's why you haven't seen a bill yet for this project.
Did they take out the old one, or just cap both ends, or what'd they do with the old?
Well, they removed the line that existed from the intake, the intake by the country club, up to where it, the other side of, into Frank Strange's property. They removed that piece and replaced it with a new line that runs all the way from the culvert, all the way up to Gitchwell Street. The piece that exists underneath, that was, that the house was built on top of, was left in place. It was plugged and left in place.
There's a, in front of Abby and Kyle Greenly's home, there's a place where an intake had been, and I noticed there's a couple of steel posts there. Is there going to be a cap put on there?
Yes. That's why it continues to be marked at that location, because there's going to be a new cap. In fact, that's one of the things that, well, I better not say this fully. I believe in conversation, Tom's been gone the last couple of days, but I believe last week, in Tom and I's conversations, that's the one thing King had outstanding to come back and do, if I remember correctly.
So, has there been any indication that there's been any improvement in the storm sewer since this happened?
Well, little looking into it with the rain we've had, they've been very happy with what they've been seeing. I would think there might be somebody at this table that might have more direct experience with the quality of if it's running good or not.
Well, we haven't had any real challenge yet, have we?
We might the rest of this week.
Yeah.
But it was running water, wouldn't it?
Yeah. I mean, it's a fully sealed line now. So, the, and remember, our main goal here was to, every year, we were dealing with sinkholes in that area. And with a new sealed line, this should eliminate the need for the city employees to go up there twice a year and deal with new existing, to dig it up, fix it, and then to repair the sinkhole itself. So, over time, I mean, it actually kind of has to buy back as far as manpower that we've been putting towards it on an annual basis.
Thanks to everybody for their work.
You know, one thing I did learn on it, and I asked the foreman of the crew, I said, you know, is that pipe that was in there, you know, I've been under the understanding that it was not a proper pipe used, it wasn't reinforced for that type of storm sewer. He says, "Well, no, at that time that they probably installed this, that was an accepted pipe." He says, "A lot has to do with how it's installed and the fill in and under it." And he said, "This appears that it was not filled underneath it properly, and as a result, you know, where it's against the ground, it wasn't filled in, you know, towards the bottom of the pipe. And as a result, over time with that weight, rather than it being circular, it now starts to form a pyramid because of the improper backfill on it." So, that was one of the underlying causes.
Move on to the water tower painting update.
I talked with Jim this morning about this. He's been in contact with them, and they're trying to work out an exact date. They were supposed to be here this week. Of course, they haven't arrived yet, and so Jim's trying to inquire and find out and hammer them down on an exact date. I think there's been a little creep from the contractor in the date that they were going to be here, but I know Jim is going to work with them this afternoon and continue to lean on them. I mean, it's going to happen, it's just a matter of getting them hammered down and get them here in town. So, it's going to happen in the next few weeks.
An update on?
And they are going to be draining the tower, to your question previously. Yeah.
Have an update on the South Fifth Street Improvement Project?
I communicated back with the county engineer our acceptance to the terms that he had submitted to us. He said that there will be more information coming forward. He'll have some kind of written formal agreement between the two parties he'll prepare for us, and I will notify the council when that is, when we receive that.
So, we haven't heard if the county accepted our?
They have.
They did.
Yeah.
The Water Well Improvement Project?
They recognized that there were some casings that needed to be replaced, and those have been placed on order, and they should be back any day now to come back, once they get the parts in and complete that project up there. It'll significantly improve the efficiency of that well, which is our main, probably our best well.
That's the one by the swimming pool?
That is correct, yes.
Move on to line eight of miscellaneous. Elena? No Elena here. Move on to 8B. The discussion on the hotel motel tax.
I was asked, after we received a letter before the last council meeting, from Mr. Conger, suggesting that the council entertain the idea of potentially moving forward with the establishment of a hotel motel tax. So, it's on your council agenda tonight to kind of discuss and kind of see what, how you guys want to proceed with this. To kind of give you some of the details on the hotel motel tax, it is an additional 7% sales tax, and it has to be passed by the voters. It was in your packet last time, if you need a copy. I've got one copy here, my copy, if you want to take a look at it. And it's a 7% sales tax that, on top of your standard sales tax, that can be passed by the, by the city. It has to be, what happens is, is the council has to approve moving forward with it, then it has to go to a vote at the people, and then if the people pass it, it would then be established. It's treated just like any other sales tax at that point. It's collected and sent into the state and eventually reverted back to the city. What's special about this sales tax is, is that it has to be earmarked and set aside for specific purposes, and most of those have to do with parks and recreation and those types of activities. The, typically, when the state uses the definition of recreation, they include in that definition, and I haven't verified that they're using the same definition, but they would use cemetery, parks, and the pool, and things of that nature, in that type of definition. It may be a different, you know, different state organization may be using the definition differently, but that is typically what they use as that definition. In response to this discussion tonight, I did, seven years ago, we briefly, the elected officials at that time briefly discussed this idea. It got into the hands of one of the committees. I believe it was, might have been the Finance Committee at that time, headed by Jim Johnston and Jim Frederick. And we approached and discussed it with the owner of the motel at that time. He was adamantly opposed to the idea of the establishment of this, the sales tax. And so, at that time, over the next few discussions internally, it kind of died on the vine. Never actually even was submitted to the full council for a full discussion at that point. It never made it past the committee. I contacted the owners today and talked to, they're the new owners of the motel today, and talked to them a little bit about this. I explained to them kind of how it worked, like another sales tax on top of what they would be charging, and that they would send it to the state, and then, of course, the state would collect it to the city. She expressed some concerns and some reservations, and said she wanted to do more research on it before she would really make, would like to give an opinion on it. But I told her we would probably stand most interested in hearing their opinion, is the business owners, on how it would impact, how they felt it would impact them. She indicated that she would like to see that if it has an, it's going to have either a direct or indirect impact on her business, that she can see a value in how this impact is going to revert back to having a benefit for her business. And so, that was one of parts of the discussion, the brief generic discussions we had this afternoon. But like I said, this was all new to her. She wanted to do some research into it and wanted to discuss it further after she had an opportunity to do that. That's pretty much in a nutshell what I learned in talking with her, and.
I wonder, any other cities in Iowa that don't have this tax?
Well, as myself and Councilman Perry discussed a little bit today, there's about 135 cities.
150, I'm --
Yeah. There's 140, 50 cities that have it in place. There are about 900 cities in the state of Iowa. However, not every city has a bed and breakfast hotel motel in it that would constitute the creation of the, of the sales tax. So, I don't know that it's fair to compare that against the 900 numbered. My feeling is, is you could probably say it's probably closer to half, and we didn't agree necessarily on that assessment of it, but I would say that that's being fair, at least, is to say that it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about half the communities that can, that have that option, actually.
Which ones in our area do, do you know?
I can tell you Carroll does it, and Lakeview does it.
Here's the whole list. Lakeview does, Dennison does, Idie Grove does, Holstein does, Carroll, Storm Lake, Fort Dodge. The only one in our area that might have a motel is Rockwell City, and I don't know if I still have anything that's functioning.
They have one.
Yeah.
Rockwell City is the only one in the area I could find that didn't have anything.
Sure.
There are 153 cities in 17 counties.
How do some of them get away with 5%?
You could do anything.
You can send it for whatever you want.
Seven or less.
Seven or less.
Seven or less, okay.
Correct. And so, yeah, so that's kind of a rough answer to your question, Curtis. Do you have another question?
Is there another, do you have a rough idea of how much revenue would raise for Sexy City Sexy?
I believe when we looked at this once before, well, if Kerry tries to suggest, he thinks it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $12,000 to $15,000. When I did the numbers, Sky was nice enough, when we were looking at this seven years ago, to share his numbers with me. I didn't make that request today when talking with the current owners, but he, based on the numbers he indicated to me, I made a number at that time that we'd probably be looking at somewhere between $8,000 and $14,000, depending on the, on the year, the variation in his, in his, his sales for a year. So.
Thank you. If, at 7%, if there were, if we were to collect $10,000, it would be, and based on like a $50 room, and I'm not sure what his rooms are, I think they're.
They're less than that.
Based on a $50 room, it would be an occupancy of about seven rooms a night. There are times when he's filled, there's times when he's not.
Sure. She said her strongest times, she was willing to share that information. The strongest times, of course, are the opening weekends of hunting seasons, like pheasant and deer, and, and then during the all-school reunion time periods, or Chautauqua days, or the county fair are pretty strong times for. Lately, they've had some good strengths with the road construction projects, but of course, you know, for the next couple of years, what road construction is going to be going on is going to be moving over to Round Correctionville. So, they're likely to go two years without any significant road construction as that starts to move back east. They won't do, I figure, once it gets closer to early, she'll probably have some bump for about a year during that time period. We did discuss that to some degree, what her strengths and weaknesses are. So, yeah, I mean, she definitely has her peaks and valleys.
This would also include any bed and breakfast, right?
That's my understanding.
Well, barbs, they would probably include barbs.
The guest house.
Guest house.
Or barb. Barblays.
There used to be another one. I don't know if it's still in operation or not.
No, I don't think so. I guess, so if we were to move forward with this, we'd have to go to a vote, probably a special election would be better than working at the general election. We'd be better than working at the general election. Some things I have read about these kind of things, I mean, it'd have to be implemented on either the first of July or the first of January. So realistically, the earliest we could do anything would probably be January 1, 2017, if we wanted to.
Last time around, the Finance Committee took this issue and kicked it around to make a determination if they wanted to make a recommendation to the council. That's obviously not required process, but that's the process we used last time as the Finance Committee kind of kicked the idea around. They approached, of course, Sky and talked with Sky about it. I guess what would probably make most sense, at least what I'd recommend to the council is if we want to proceed forward on entertaining this issue, that we determine what committee would probably be the appropriate one to review this issue.
I don't think it would be a bad thing to look into. Extra revenue for us.
One of the beauties to me of it is, I mean, and I spend a lot of time in motels. I mean, you pay it, I don't think I've ever been in a motel, but didn't charge it. And it's just kind of a fact of life, but it's money coming into the city that wouldn't be from the city people per se, in most cases.
I've stayed at some $25 hotels since I moved to Iowa that didn't charge it.
So, so we'll need like a motion to decide?
You really don't, actually, we just need to identify what the committee is, if that's, if you guys want to proceed. And the council could, I guess, take action to direct that committee to, to proceed forward reviewing it.
Who is the Finance Committee?
That'd be you and Bill.
Oh, me and Bill.
Perfect.
And Scott.
No wonder you're sitting down there laughing.
And Scott.
Are you sure I'm on that one? I think I am.
I think it would be, I mean, I think, I think that there would be some, at least perceived benefit. I mean, if we can maintain parks and those kind of things, or, or facilities, there are more reasons for people to come to town. I mean, and I think that that, in terms of, or, does economic development type...
That's why I said you could be real careful about how they square off the definition of that. You know, I could tell in my conversation with the owners that she was real concerned in how, what type of investments would result in more people staying overnight in our community. And I know that was something she addressed specifically in our discussion that the committee will probably hear about.
Well, in any case, if it has to go for parks, that's money that we don't necessarily have to take out of the general fund for that, that could be used for other types of economic development work or something like that. And that seems to have been one of our goals, to try and achieve some of those things. I mean, I think, whatever the money goes for, it's an influx of capital. What would allow us to have a little more to work with to promote Sac City? I guess, I would think, I don't know if we need a motion to do that, but I think it would be good to direct the Finance Committee to pursue this and bring a determination back to the whole council.
Most, a motion would probably be the correct action.
I would move that the, that we direct the Finance Committee to examine the hotel motel tax and what the economic impact would be for the city budget.
We have a motion.
I'll second it.
I'll second. Any other discussion? After that, we'll move on to a vote.
Councilperson Mailer?
Yes.
McKenty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Motion, Harry.
Sorry, guys.
Move on to eight C. The May Cemetery mowing contract review.
Curtis?
Mayor, if I believe that this, I don't know, it constitutes a performance review, and I'd like to request a closed session.
As in, not a city employee, you are not subject to closed session.
And according to Iowa code, contract employees who are not direct employees are still subject to chapters 21.
You're not a contract employee, you're a contracting company.
If I had, if I were contracted to do things like keep public records for you, I would be, I would, I would have to comply with the Iowa code under that.
Yeah.
I'm contracting to perform service for you.
You are a company providing a service to the city. Because if you use that same determination, any, any company that we do a contractual service with would have, would be subject to closed session.
I understand.
And that's not the intent of the law.
To be, to do closed session, we would have to have announced and intend to do that.
It would have to be on the agenda to do so.
It would have to be on the agenda to be able to do so.
Yeah, you would have had to have requested it prior to the council meeting so it could have been placed upon the council meeting agenda.
Well, am I not subject to it, or would I have had to have requested before?
Well, I'd be, either way, it'd be a moot point tonight. But I'd be happy, and if you, to look into that and give you a recommendation from the city attorney in the future.
Thank you.
The Cemetery Committee has met and worked with Curtis. And Curtis is, at least for my sake, I think, has been doing a really good job of meeting any concerns that were expressed, and I would just run through the cemetery this afternoon. I mean, it, I think it's looking quite good. I mean, yeah.
I was just out there today at a funeral, and I was not happy with the Catholic part of the cemetery. I think it's too long. And then east of that, on the east side of that road, I believe that's our property too. That grass over there is too long. So I'm not happy with it. I don't think it's meeting the contract part of how tall the grass is supposed to be in all areas. And I know it's hard to keep it all the same when there's so much cemetery, but I think it's too long.
The east side, Teresa?
On that, where the, like you come in on the north end, come in there, and you go around to the north where the sign is, over in that area. That's pretty long over in that area.
Okay. There's a portion of it that I know the city employees take care of.
Okay, so...
And they were out there mowing today.
Okay, maybe.
So, I'll have to check to see. I just don't want to make sure we're, we're including.
I don't know who does.
Because I know Justin was out there mowing in that section today.
There's no graves over in this area. So maybe that's what the guys take care of.
Is that north of the Catholic part?
No, it's east of the Catholic part.
Okay.
Behind the directory.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's probably what Justin would have been out there.
The grass is 30 inches long.
Yeah, I, I, I would have to check, but...
I was out there last night with the fire department. You come in, well, like say, the north drive of this bottom part, and just before you go up and around the hall where that road comes down this way, there's a big hole by a tombstone. But there was one knocked over. And it hadn't been knocked over that long because the grass underneath it was green. It was turning yellow. The three of us guys set that stone back up on the base so it wasn't laid down. I, it had to get knocked over somehow, and it hadn't been done that long. But there is a big hole just to the next one of that. Can't think of the name of the stone that we set up.
And so where is that located?
If you go to the north drive of the lower part, and that, that section, when you get, have a road action, you can turn south.
Okay.
It's just around the corner, about the second row, right on the left-hand side there.
Okay. I'll figure that out later.
North to South Gate?
Yeah.
Who's responsible for spraying our cemetery too? Do we do it?
Spray, you mean like...
Like for clover, for weeds, dandelions?
Well, the arrangement that's always been made in the past, and of course Curtis wouldn't have had an opportunity to take advantage of this, usually what we do is, is we make an arrangement with the contractor. We provide the spray if they do the spraying for it. And so that's usually, of course, done in the fall, is when you're going to get the best impact for, from it. But you can do it in the spring, but usually it doesn't hit, well, you can see my yard. When you do it in the spring, it only has, you know, marginal return on it. But, yeah, that's usually the arrangement that's put in place for, for spray.
So are we going to spray that then, or what's the plan this fall?
Yes, we would spray weeds, yeah.
Anything else on the cemetery?
I know the last time I drove through there, a few days ago, there's a drastic improvement from what it was. I think things are going much better than they were. I can't say they're perfect, but I don't know if anybody will be perfect, but it's, it looks a lot better.
I'm not saying it's not better than it was, but it's still, I think, in areas, it's not what it should be, but...
But basically, the Cemetery Committee is reasonably happy with what's going on? Is that correct?
There's, there's still a little room for improvement on it. I mean, this is new to Curtis, so you've got to give him a little bit of a break.
Well, I don't need a break. Tell me suggestions. I think it's...
Go ahead, Bruce.
I think it's always going to be a work in progress. I mean, if you have enough people to go in and mow the whole thing in one day, you're not going to go back and mow it the next day. I mean, either, either there are going to be areas that need attention, or there's going to be a whole thing that needs attention. And I think, you know, with Curtis' plan, and one thing I've appreciated, he's, about every day I get from him an email saying, "These are the areas I mowed today. Here's a, here's a plan for mowing tomorrow." And, you know, and it's kind of in there. So, I mean, there's a plan that he's working with. I don't, I don't think he has enough people that will ever go in and mow the whole thing in one day, but in the process, it will never all look shaggy in one day either. Yeah, I mean, that's...
So did you get more equipment and more staff than Curtis? Is that my understanding from what I hear?
There's a gentleman who does one of the portions that you complained about tonight. He mowed that Thursday.
Yes.
Fred?
Steve Gary. I've probably been out there in the last two weeks more than anybody. I've got to say, go along with the Cemetery Committee. I think there's been a drastic improvement in the last two weeks. One thing, another thing that Curtis is battling, and I battled, I fell down twice in two weeks, is we need to do something out there in the cemetery. We need to roll it, we need to bring in some fill. I, next to my family plot on the road that Larry's talking about, before you would turn to go up, I, when I was a kid, that used to be the avenue of flags that the fire department put up. This week, I fell in a hole that was a parking post. Bruce and I were talking about it the other afternoon out there. There are so many holes, there's so many tracks where the, the tractors have gone across. You know, they tried to put a piece of plywood down, but a piece of 3/4-inch plywood isn't enough to bridge the weight of an excavator and things like this. And these are things that, that he's up against. You know, if, you know, if we have manicured cemeteries like in Fort Dodge or Storm Lake and things like this, where they have four or five guys, that's what they do. They're out there filling those holes and rolling and things like this. But like I said, I really feel that Curtis has done just a great job here in the last couple of weeks since it really stopped raining where he can get out there and mow.
Well, filling the holes is not a part of the contract.
Not his job, that would be the city's job.
But I mean, you know, that's going to make his job easier and better.
This spring, we actually went out there and did a little bit.
Oh, you put a lot in.
But we also recognized, and actually Curtis had brought to our attention, that he would be willing to help us identify other locations moving forward. We didn't want to do any more because we were fearful that if we did more, that it wouldn't, the grass wouldn't be back up before Memorial Day. So we held off, and we'll do some more this fall.
It's very understandable. It's, you know, it's a continuing process. You know, we look at DT's family, basically, we're there for 20, 30 years. Tom took care of that. That was his job, you know? And they, they were out there doing that continually. And, you know, you, you guys are stretched as it is trying to get all your projects done, you know? But it's just about getting impossible to walk across.
I know when we did fill one area, I unfortunately stopped in the city office. There was a very heated woman who was insistent that there had been vandalism over her husband's grave, that I was going out to the cemetery with her. Well, we had filled in tracks. And 25 minutes later, she was calmed down enough that, "That's fine, but the blankety-blank thing, but a blankety-blank be grass by blankety-blank Memorial Day. We'll do our best. If it stays raining like this, it may not be." But it is, it is now green, and it is grass, and that is good. And one thing I think, with the cemetery, we're always dealing with heightened emotions, whether it's people dealing with their loved ones, or a time of loss, or a time of grief. You know, perhaps one thing that is important is, when there is going to be a funeral, is, is the cemetery contractor notified of where the funeral will be a couple of days, or when we find out? So with that area, it could be...
That was my plan, but I wasn't notified there was a funeral.
Yeah. I mean, maybe that's a communication that we should make sure happens.
Yeah.
So that, when we have people that are out there, that area might be bumped up in priority a little bit. I mean, you know...
And I just want to, go ahead.
So I mean, so that, if you have an influx of visitors in one particular area, I know at home, if I'm having somebody that's coming in for coffee, I probably clean the area of going to have coffee in first, before my bedroom, even though my bedroom might be next to the location.
And I don't want to start any kind of argument with, with Teresa. There was a point on a Monday where the Cemetery Committee came out and reviewed the cemetery with me, and there was a portion of the cemetery that I pointed out that I was going to be doing today. Cemetery Committee indicated this would be a mow today situation. And the Catholic section of the cemetery looks better than that section did on that Monday morning that you indicated would be a time to mow today situation. And in the pattern, tomorrow is cemetery, is Catholic Day for me out there. Then I follow. Does everyone follow that? So, according to the guidance of the Cemetery Committee, it was my feeling that the Catholic section was not yet ready to be mowed, and that tomorrow was going to catch it, and it was going to make it fun.
Anything else?
I got one other thing. Larry, when you were out there and you seen that stone, did you happen to go up into the north section by the, behind the, I call it the amphitheater, where the podium and, there is a large stone that's been toppled over there, right by Keith and Mary? Just right on top?
No, I didn't see that last night.
Right there by Keith and Mary Farmers, right in that weird section on, just on top of the hill.
Yeah.
Hoskins?
Whose?
Hoskins.
I didn't walk over there because I was at Keith and Mary Farmers.
If you just go up the hill from the monument?
Yeah, it would be headed, headed east.
They, Fama knows about that.
Okay.
It's been down for at least all of last year.
Okay.
It's a relation to, relation to somebody in Sac City that...
Shafers?
Yes. And they were going to get a price to re, put back up, because the bases...
Mm-hmm, yeah, all three pieces are...
They know about it, yeah.
And I have talked to a woman at the State Historic Preservation Office about grants that may be available for some of the, some of the very old and fragile historic monuments down in the lower level that are, some of them are just leaned up against a tree because that's kind of what's there.
Yeah, nothing to hold them down anymore.
And I don't have all the information, I need to even report back. But I mean, I, it would be nice to be able to deal with some of those, if I would say orphaned graves, maybe that's, you know... But that's off of the, that's certainly off task of, of the mowing situation. mowing situation. But that's just an FYI.
Anything else on the cemetery mowing review?
My last thing is, I'd just like to note, Mr. Mailer, are you suggesting that I not enter?
No, no, I'm not saying that. Somehow it got knocked over. Who did it? I don't know. But we just, we seen it laying there, and about three of us picked it up and set it back up, because I don't like to see a stone laying over like that. No, I'm not suggesting that you did it, or, somebody might have walked along there and pushed it over, who knows? So, no, I'm not accusing you of that at all.
Thanks.
Thanks for your work.
Move on to eight D. We'll need a motion.
Thank you, Curtis.
For the second reading of ordinance number 2016-277, entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa, by amending provisions pertaining to collection of solid waste.
This is basically just to reflect the increases that are happening at the county landfill that will be passed on to us.
I'll make a motion approving the second reading of ordinance 2016-277, entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac City by amending provisions pertaining to the collection of solid waste.
I have a second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Bill and Bruce.
I have a second. I wasn't sure who you wanted.
Okay, seven seconds, okay.
If there's no other discussion, we'll call for a vote.
Counselperson Bruny?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Mailer?
Yes.
McKenty?
Yes.
Bruny?
Yes.
Motion, Perry.
Do I have a counsel person to introduce E?
I'll make a.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to introduce the first reading of ordinance number 2016-278.
I'll second.
No, no, that's just an introduction.
That's just an introduction. We need a first and second.
Um, I was directed by the council at the last meeting to, to take the steps necessary to establish the smaller route that was presented to the council by the Trails Committee through city action. What you'll see here is a tie on chapter 76, which is the bicycle code. It identifies a new section, 7615, which would identify community trails. I believe I've identified the proper route there. Steve, would you take a moment to make sure that my, my path is correct? I have it based upon your map and the starting point you identified.
It should be at the southwest corner of the community center. That would be South 12th and Audubon.
Would that be south?
No, 11th.
11th, 11th and Audubon, and then south to Lojer. And then one block west, and then north to Audubon, and then one block east.
So there is no point?
The starting point.
Perfect.
So the Trails Committee has done some fundraising for, for part of the cost of this, is that my understanding?
Yes. Stencils are here, they're in possession of the Maintenance Department here at the city. As of today, we have received in right around $1,700. So we have the, the stencils in hand. We're ready to, to continue on if we could, with the help of our donations, and we're still looking for donations. We have some donations outstanding right now.
Now, I, Brandy Ripley on the committee did come talk to me at one point, and she suggested that there might be volunteers from the committee that are interested in being trained on how to.
We have four or five that would sure help.
Okay.
I, I guess, our biggest thing, and she's really been pushing it, and I says, I think this needs to be left to the council in regards to where the stencils go, how far from the curb, what we're going to do, and I think each route is going to be a little different, where those would be placed. You know, and I think that's, we're hoping that this ordinance will give us some direction in that regard.
As far as your estimates for paint, Steve, is that for all of the trails, or just for this trail that you?
Well, this one, Adam, is probably the sample. You know, we've heard people tell us, with that size of sample, it takes about a half a gallon of paint. The next person's telling us it takes over a gallon. So this is kind of our test area. We're thinking that, you know, if paint is $40 a gallon, we're going to have approximately $1,200 that we could do something with, so we're looking in roughly 30 gallons. We're thinking that if we have two stencils and, and some help, we could maybe do two at a time and roll them instead of spraying. We thought by, by rolling, we could probably conserve paint.
So the original plan, as I recall, you're doing two stencils per block?
Per block, yes.
So that would be?
Well, I think we came up with like 52, if I remember right. That, that, that sounds high.
That sounds high, because it's from Audubon Street.
Maybe it's 32, maybe it's 32.
Yeah, from Audubon Street to Lojer is, Audubon Street, that, that's eight blocks, is that right?
Seven.
Seven?
Well, from Audubon, seven, you have eight if you go down from the highway.
So it'll be seven blocks each way, so it'll be a total of.
Okay.
No.
Rolling off task.
That'll be sixteen blocks.
Yeah.
So that would be 32 stencils, and so.
Or not.
Plus one on Lojer.
Yeah.
Or two on Lojer, whatever.
No, seven plus one is eight. Seven blocks, eight.
Well, you can't do it on Audubon.
Right, nine, 16, and two is 32.
Nine, 18. Nine times two is 18.
Is it eight blocks or seven blocks?
I wasn't paying any attention, I'm sorry.
Well, whatever. You enjoyed it too much.
Yeah, I know.
And one?
40. You got one block there.
It's 15, and one block there is 60.
You're counting though when you're going to do it, right? Us counting here ain't going to do anything.
No, I guess all I'm really looking at is, if you're looking at 32 or 36 stencils.
And you got to remember, we got stencils on some.
Three, four, five.
Turning directions.
Six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 12, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 28.
Would you, would you have put more?
28 stencils.
Well, you know, that, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know if there's some DOT regulations, I don't know if, if this is something that we got to look into. These were just our thoughts. If you go down to Lakeview, they're, they're approximately every half a block there on the south end. But that, the trail isn't very long. Basically, it's from Isos Point to Shotgun Hill.
Whatever it is, we should approve it.
Is that a motion?
One other question, okay? With your stint, or with the painting of the stripes and so on, like for parking places, does the city have to do that every year, or how often do they do that?
Yeah, these are likely going to need to be painted every year.
And that's what we're looking at with our donations, is people that'll perpetually.
Okay. Even, even at half a gallon a stencil, at 40 bucks a gallon, what we're talking about is 560 bucks. So it looks like, it looks like you really have money in hand for.
Right, to keep on.
For the first three years, anyway. I guess that was, that was my diversion down the rathole for how many were there. I mean.
Let me complicate it. Where are they going to be located on the street? If I'm not mistaken, both on 11th Street and 12th Street, one side of the street is parking, the other one's no parking, is that correct? Okay, so you're going to.
You can park on both sides.
You can park on both sides, yeah.
So you're going to put it in the center then, correct? Center of the street?
That's what my thought would be.
Yeah, so they're visible?
That would make the most sense.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Or put it, could, could, can they be placed, you're just outside of car width on one side or the other?
I mean, where you want, but we just need to, that's something to be determined by the Trails Committee, they can look it over again and determine.
We're getting way off.
Do we have, let's put it this way, do we have any restrictions the Trails Committee needs to work with, or can they make all these decisions?
They can make all those decisions.
Go for it.
You've established it.
It's all yours.
I would move passage of the first reading of ordinance number 2016-278, entitled, An Ordinance Amendment to the ordinance of Sac City, Iowa, by amending provisions pertaining to chapter 76 bicycle regulations.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
Oh, I introduced it, so I can't second it?
Correct.
Okay, sorry.
I'll second it then.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the first reading.
Vote quick.
Okay, we got to vote.
Counselperson Mailer?
Yes.
McKenty?
Yes.
Bruny?
Yes.
Bruny?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion, Perry.
Move on to eight F. We'll need a motion for consideration of resolution number 2016-10, entitled, Resolution to Fix a Date for Public Hearing on Possible Vacation and Sale of City Property. Little chunk there.
She probably called the wrong one on your page.
There's like an alley that used to run through there. Just trying to clean it up. Yeah, just cleaning up.
Do you guys have any questions for me on this?
Where's that located?
This would be the very, very end piece of alley at the Bauer Belt property.
Oh, down town here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's, the rest of that alley has all been distributed, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Not down here, not the old.
But crossing case, the rest of that alley is all in private hands, but for some reason, that very, very last chunk was, was never distributed out.
I'll make a motion for resolution number 2016-10, entitled, Resolution to Fix a Date for Public Hearing on a Possible Vacation of Sale of City Property. What's that date again?
June, June 14.
I'm sorry. On June 14, 2016.
Good.
By the block at the city council.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If none, we'll move on to a vote.
Counselperson Perry?
Yes.
Mailer?
Yes.
McKenty?
Yes.
Bruny?
Yes.
Bruny?
Yes.
Motion, Perry.
Move on to committee and department head reports.
Kudos to the Maintenance Department, all the work they're doing at the Freedom Rock Plaza.
That looks nice.
Keith Rem has been the architect of that, so he deserves the most credit. I know he is, John Phillips and Ron have been responsible for the flagpoles, and Keith has been assisted by Cameron, Lucas, and Chad at different points, on different elements.
Pen Passa, thank you on the both guys.
Thank you.
You know, we did have a request for an additional flagpole, so you can deal with that at a later date.
I actually have a plan for that. I've already discussed it with a representative from the Coast Guard, okay, so.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
If anything else, we'll move on to the council forum.
You were okay with that, right, Josh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything in the council forum? If not, we'll have to call for a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Second.
Second. Go to a vote.
Counselperson Mailer?
Yes.